Hi, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Fair Hating Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Leaks Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the Tuber Times on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice was also posted on the Bolton Board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice haven't been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. So can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bush. Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Caillou.
Here.
Mr. Vall.
Here.
Mr. Nicka.
Here.
Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Antonin. Do I do I require us present on Zoom?
Excuse me?
If Mrs. Antonin is on Zoom, do I mark her as present or?
I would I would mark her as as present, but also note that.
Okay, okay. Mr. Brandon Eddy?
Here.
Okay, let's. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America as we the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So we don't, we don't have any new business today, but we're we're gonna continue the the master plan discussion. And I'll I'll get into what what I thought we could do tonight, although we seem to be, we're obviously missing a couple people. But let's let's just get the administrative items out of the way and and then we can dive, you know, we can dive into the the survey and and other other items related to the reexamination. So has anyone, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I will, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes if there are no comments. Second.
Mr. Olson, you're up, Stan.
Yeah.
Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Caillou.
Yes.
Mr. Vall.
Yes.
The Nick and the. Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Antonin will not vote since she's on Zoom, correct, uh, because what we discussed when we set up the.
Well, I believe we ultimately adopted a policy.
No, we didn't adopt a formal policy, but we did talk about maybe members not voting.
And I, yeah, so I mean, to the extent that we don't actually, I mean, she can participate, watch and zoom with those things, make comments, but I don't want she votes.
We, we, yeah, we determined that. Well, for tonight, it doesn't matter because we're not taking any action. Other than approving the minutes, we have a forum for the minutes, so all's well that ends well.
Sure.
Um, but if you're. I, you have to be careful.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Brandon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So. Uh, the the planner was here last meeting and discussed certain actions or or certain things that were, I think, more important urgently in terms of the timeline more than others, right? And so the first thing that I that was urgent is the survey and getting the survey ready. Uh, and and so I thought, so so what I've, what I've done is is, you know, put together a draft or just at least a starting document that we can edit here tonight and, you know, then pass around for comment. So obviously, um, we'd send it to Sullivan to review, we'd send it to Chris York, we'd send it to, you know, to others as well to to take a look at. Um, it's it's a pretty general survey. It it's a little longer than the one that was that was given the last time or that was given in twenty sixteen. But I I thought if there were any, we could, you you know, obviously review this, make comments, and I can distribute or we can distribute to the different, the different folks. Uh, and get comment by the next meeting and then hopefully have a plan to to distribute to the town at that point. Now, Mike Sullivan did say that the town would would be the one that was distributing the survey, so I I assume that's gonna be through email. I'll I'll have to talk to Chris York about how that's gonna be. Uh, how that's gonna be done. Um, so I can.
I guess we might have to have paper copies for folks who don't want to do it over email or something like that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to distribute or make the, we're gonna have to make paper copies available in, uh, Chamber of Commerce. And please give Shu a copy for the for the minutes.
I think we have those all.
Oh, um, we can, and like I said, I just want to emphasize that this is a draft. It is not obviously, you know, meant to be widely distributed or to be on a.
Mike Sullivan's team wrote this?
Well, no, I. With the help of.
That makes more sense.
With the help of of other, yeah. So, yeah.
I might look at it and adjust it.
No, I mean, it was just to get questions down in each of the areas and then we can decide, you you know, what. You you know, what else needs to be included here. And then we also have to make sure that the folks that are in charge of each committee, I I I'd like to have names of people that are gonna be in each committee um, so that I can get that to Chris York and the mayor before the next meeting. Well, so I spoke to, yeah, so I spoke to the mayor and the, it it is not required for the governing body to approve uh, members of these different subcommittees. I spoke to the mayor that I I, you know, as a courtesy run by who, you know, who we selected for each of those uh, for each of those community positions, which I had no problem doing and was was certainly planning to do anyway, right? Like I I, you you know, just to make sure that um, we've run a transparent and pro and a process that's aligned and 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 whatnot. So I I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone have a problem with that?
I I think, I I also have discussions for, we know. You know, it it's just a notice. It's a notice issue so that they know particularly if you have meetings here that these people are here for that.
Right.
So. It's not, it's a notice, not a proof.
Right, it's a, it exactly. And if 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 the mayor or Chris had a problem with somebody we were including on these committees, we would talk about it as a board and if we felt like, if we felt strongly enough, we would, you know, we can.
You know, I'm still.
It's an end, it's our, it's our process.
Of course, yes.
As I said, so we retain the, we retain the the authority to kind of do what we, what we want, right? I I guess is this, but, you know, in the interest of cooperation.
Is there a goal for the number of folks that we want on the committee or is it really a?
I I think it, I I would argue that for each of the committee, it should be the 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 person on the planning board that's leading the group, and I would say two others. I I would not want it to be much bigger unless there's, unless, I mean, let's talk about that, right? I I think that's. I I think you get too many people, it becomes too hard to, you you know, coordinate and organize.
Yeah, three to four teams seems right. I'm thinking of my own, the utilities, um, vertical here, um, with Rich Cardella kind of as the other committee member. I'm almost feeling like we've got a lot of work to do on the utilities. Topic, I I feel like if we had one more of that, I think it would add some color to the conversation, but I would leave fourth.
I think my part will be three from the four sides. There's a recreation. I think there's gonna be a lot of folks.
That's fine.
Put to that, so.
The three additional to you or two plus you?
I would say including me, four others personally, because it's.
Four.
Well, obviously, because it's recreation, conservation, and open space, so I apparently want.
Okay.
Correct, the cross-section of folks to comment on that.
What about DJ? Do you get involved in this?
At the last meeting, we did, uh, Mike, Mike Sullivan did talk about between three to seven people, and then it could also include the number of the governing body or an other interested community member, so like a DJ, you know.
Oh, so he's one of the Parks and Rec, so.
But that that will be.
Good first resource, yeah.
Depending on your, on your particular committee, things like circulation facilities, it's good to have someone from your DPW. It's good to have your engineer. They, you know. Excuse me. Let's say you're going to be planning to do things by way of, you know, where you know where it's wet, we know we need to, we need to make sure that, highlight those things. You know, the guys from DPW and and Rich Cardella, they know what work is being planned, those types of things. Obviously, the resources, you know. If it's circulation, maybe somebody from the environmental committee too, did have resource in toward that. We also had the path of circulation. Um, if you're doing something for the downtown, you know, you're gonna be looking at, you know, development down there. We've heard different comments. Um, a variety of sections, if you if you want a very special section at one end, it's more, quote unquote, historic. If you're doing that, you certainly want to make sure that you're including someone from your, I don't know, do you have a a business community group?
Yes.
You know, someone from there.
Association there?
Yeah, what are your problems right now? You know, those types of things. And that doesn't mean they rule the committee or governing committee, but she gets some ideas of how you might be able to coordinate. And that way, if if there are gonna be circulation issues, if you are planning to open up streets or something like that, you can, you can start coordinating things like that. Those are my only other suggestions. That and if you suddenly find yourself in a committee meeting with yourself and a bunch of other planning board members realize it can't be a violation of the quorum requirements, otherwise you shouldn't be in those, you know, it doesn't sound like they're gonna be doing that, so. Above than that, use the resources we have, from what I can see from even the resource inventory, the folks that have come to us in the past. You know, touch base with the chief of police, how's everything going with the new facilities, touch base with the new communities, you know, so that you're not having to dig around. They have it at their fingertips, you save them time and energy and aggravation.
So for each of the committees, though, we should make sure that we do include people from, but like Don was saying, from from the different, so like, like, for the housing section, even though we're we're doing it with the with the update already, there, you you know, somebody from zoning, your business, just, you you know, that kind of thing, like, is this, this will help. I I may get all, by nature, everybody that needs to be involved will be involved or have input on the, on, it'll ensure that. I I I, there's plenty of committees in town, so there's the Tree Commission, there's, isn't there, there's a Historic Preservation Committee, right? Um, obviously zoning, environmental, we should draw off in all of those groups first before we we pick individuals um, from uh, from the town.
Point, point of work, Sheila.
Yes.
Who did our comprehensive report this year from zoning board? Was that Mr. Forte?
Mr. Forte and Mr. Ryan, they're working on twenty twenty four.
If you get into some planning issues, it might be good to have.
Yeah.
One or or both of them in a committee setting if they had, if they had the time. Really easy for me if you have to work for other people.
That's, that's.
So we.
Yeah.
But you'll see the kinds of, you know, again, one of the things I think you want to be conscious of in your master plan is, as we've talked before, you don't really want to govern by variance. Right? The idea is not to have everybody come here to have to get a variance, you know, and if you're fine that routinely you're granting a variance, something, and those kinds of things. And again, you don't have to solve the ordinance problem, but you can highlight and say, you know, to the extent that either the planning board routinely gives this kind of a variance on the bulk when they're doing a subdivision, zoning board adjustment seems to be giving this kind of relief, people are able to establish that. Maybe we tweak or make a recommendation to tweak that so people don't have to come to planning boards. It gets expensive. You see the planners, you see those folks. And if you then make that suggestion in your master plan, then mayor and council can go about designing the ordinance that it fits. I I will tell you, we had a discussion, a lengthy discussion on um, one of the applications that was approved before the zoning board. And I think Mr. Olson was there also, you know. When you do the zone, I don't want to take over the conversation, but I would to to bring this point, to make make the point, you know, when you're doing zoning, you you know, it's a one size fits all. You know, so you have your R five, you have your, you know, those specifically, and I think you might want to really look at those properties on your waterfront. You know, we had, we had one property particularly large, still, you know, raved, you mean scraped to clean and still came in looking for some variances. And they they were successful in in the flexible sea. But it it might, you know, you have different issues there. What can you look like from the waterfront? Some some of these houses, they're not even fronted on a, on a, quote unquote, residential stream. You know, you're going back, that maybe that's something we, they should take a look at, or we should take a look at for those, and I think the representative of the zoning board will probably help there. I know we have some.
Those are in that zoning board, right?
And that's. I don't know, that that one's.
But I'm saying the general ideas.
But the general ideas.
Twenty three is available and I distributed that to everybody. Twenty four, I pulled all the data and given it to Frank Forte and Barney Ryan, and they're working on just sort of like an analysis summary.
And the, and the reason I say it's helpful to bring those folks in is because, you know, applications come in before the zoning board, not the understanding here too. Applications come in, they say, well, they granted a lot of relief for this, but you're gonna find that in many instances, that relief was significantly narrowed. They came back in and those, and you don't necessarily see that in the resolution, right? You you may, there may be a blurb from that or access, significantly modify the resolution. But, you know, how that was nuanced, that can help you out too, I think. And I'll shut up.
Okay, so for for, no, that's okay. So for next meeting, though, like, please have the names of of the people, because that's something Michael Sullivan's been been looking for. Is the names of the people and the the actual, you know, so, you know, next meeting, we can, you you know, make sure you talk to those people, we can bring those, have those people come to the next meeting, um, and and then we can approve.
Uh, so they should be here.
They should be here, yeah. And if you can get me the names, obviously, as soon as possible so that I can clear them.
Yeah. And if some, someone's on the agenda, they're just gonna sit around until we get to the planning board.
Well, that's, I don't, is there anything on the agenda for next next month issue?
I believe Rich is reviewing an application from Tavolo.
Okay.
Um.
How big?
Status of that is pretty significant.
Is it?
That's, that's the shutters.
Yes.
Litigation.
Yes.
Or the shut, yeah, that's.
I would say that's pretty significant. So he's reviewing it, what I don't know about its completeness, so that would really determine.
So that's gonna be a significant.
The likelihood that they're ready for the next meeting.
I was bringing up, because you don't want people wishing they're not.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Because they're not gonna be involved in the planning board decisions, they're gonna be involved in the committees, but if we have a hearing.
The, the, the important thing is the the approved, like, as long as we we can approve them, the following meeting, or we can take some, are we able to take like a like unanimous consent, like you do for a board, like a corporate board, so they don't have to meet, you can just get people to sign?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, if you're, if you're designating your chair to to have your subcommittee, I would certainly want you to know who it was, but I would leave it to the chair to.
No, no, my, my point is, if, so people can get me names, you know, the next couple of weeks, I can make sure I have the appropriate discussions. But if we're at a point next week where the meeting is too significant as, you you know, it, we can have people come late, but look, the the meeting last week took. I'm sorry, the last meeting was, you know, took a while. We didn't have a whole lot of time to discuss anything after that. And so my point is simply, if we're able to approve people we, between meetings, you know, by vote without.
No, I think, I think, I don't think we can do that. If you have the names and you get the circulation up to, but again, as to the, there's the circulation. We can then just do them in Moss as we're, as the, as the committee is ready at at whatever meeting, you know, so they don't need to be here.
They don't need to be here for that, that's.
I, I don't know, they don't need to be here.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, otherwise, what would they do? Just sit here and?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, like beneficial if they thought, and it would be like, I'm, you know.
I think, I think, it's also nice to acknowledge their work and let's face it, they're volunteering too. So, but I mean, in terms of the approval process, just to get them there so that we have contact information with Sheila, because I'm sure the committees then are going to work through Sheila. You know, you're not all there at the same time. There might be a separate one, might.
I I agree with you that it's, that it was why I wanted to get them here, but I'm saying in the interest of getting it done fast and getting it done quickly and get them approved. We can do that in Moss at the next meeting without them being here and then file, they can all come, like, they can be here, you know what I'm saying? Like, that, that's it, it was, it's just. That way, get them approved so that Michael Sullivan can, you know, can work with them and and they're now approved and and, you you know, can are decadent ties to.
We're talking about the same place as November being.
Right.
Yeah, except I'm not again without Rich here. I don't know, I can just check something for a date, but my my feeling is that the likelihood that we would have the Tavolo application next month, which is October twenty first, we would need to know that. You know, ten days in advance.
So you're, you're thinking.
I would think they're more likely to be November, so you you would be more likely to have some time in October. That's just like, if I'm. I got it. I can check one.
So it might be worthwhile to know, Shu, that we may want to have, if if the, that application will not be heard, then it it's probably worthwhile to have Michael here at next meeting so that he can meet everybody. We will have everybody here then and we'll get those committees kicked off and, you you know.
He's gonna work directly with the committees offline?
He's gonna work directly with the commit, so, uh, what, the way I understood it last meeting is he was talking, he said, most of the work is done through the committees. And so as directed by the planning firm, working in conjunction with the committees, and then that work comes back to the board for for approval and all comments and authorization.
So he will, for each of the committee meetings, he will join those committee meetings.
Yeah.
Help lead those committee meetings.
Yeah.
And then he and I, for example, would decide will we present back to the board.
That's right.
On the recommendation, thank you, committee, we appreciate the inputs, let's figure out what we will present back, we come back together.
That's right.
Okay.
Done, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you do whatever's convenient for your committee members. Again, really, you're not, you don't have a forum, it's not a forum, a meeting, so if you want to do it via Zoom and do those kinds of things, if that's helpful for your committee members to allow them to do those things, you'll make it. There, there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of information to be gathered, whatever's easiest for you guys, I think you can sort of set the tone as you would on any committee.
Yes, because I really can meet at three P M on a Wednesday here. With your committee.
Or, or, yeah.
That's what, or, or the, or the library, or whatever room you want to meet. That's what we did when we had the, uh.
Yeah.
We, we went and reviewed the Board of Education stuff they were trying to do. We just like, hey, is anybody available? One o'clock, we got.
We met, we met with the, when they did their capital approval.
Capital approval.
We met here with them.
Yep.
At, at a time that was convenient, they walked across the street from the school, we sat down.
I'm saying, it doesn't have to be a eight o'clock at night, you know, it could be whenever you, whatever convenient for everybody.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah.
I mean, if RAC is having a committee, they've got a meeting on their own, show up at their meeting. No, you know, that's, I mean.
Okay, so let's, uh, so in terms of the committees, I think we're, we're set, or at least we have marching orders in terms of what to do till now and the next meeting. Um, why don't we just look at this survey and and start, um, commenting? So, um, the the first section in, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, did you have access to the previous survey?
We did, yes.
And you read through the hundred and seventy nine page and then?
Well. Not all hundred and seventy.
I'm sure you asked for it.
The, the, the survey wasn't a hundred and seventy nine pages.
Right.
Yeah, the responses.
It was, I think, what, like a two-page survey? I don't think it's very long, the the questions that were asked, I hear, like. Why, yes.
No, I just wondered if you had access, even if it was nine years ago.
We, we definitely have it.
We do. I think that's our, you know, section, probably. Well, like you said, it's, it's a beast of print, so it made an age of, whatever.
Well, that's all the responses, the, the questions are not.
Are not that many.
Yeah, they're not, there weren't that many questions and Michael, I I mean, I I think that we all agree that the survey should not be something that's, I I would think would not be more than three pages, otherwise we're gonna have trouble getting people to fill it out.
Yeah, it's, it's got a time limit, right? It's got a limit, but like, you can't expect people.
Sit down for a half.
It's gotta have scope to it, right? You have to sort of narrow scope. You can't just go crazy out of the field, you don't have to find your answers.
Right.
That was my, like, what is the scope of this? Like, what are we looking to achieve? It's just high level.
So, so, that, look, so these are some fairly high-level topics, I start, that then drill down into different, in into, into more, um. Now, some of the surveys I I saw near the different elements of the plan, um, I, you know, we could go that direction, but this was like the first section in the same, I I think the first section of our original survey was more, I guess, demographic information about, um, you know, how long we lived here. Um, you know, do you rent or own? I don't know that that's a really relevant question. There's mostly here's owners, you have children. I I would think there'd be some other questions that could be added there. Um, to get an idea of, of.
Answer.
Yeah, who's answering? Um, then, you you know, town character and quality of life, I mean, these are pretty, these are open-ended questions that I think, um, you can, you know, provide some context and some color about people's experiences in the town, right? And so there are meant to be open responses. Uh, and then there's, you you know, a quantitative uh, objective set of questions where you're asking them to rate certain characteristics. And so, you you know, the idea is that you start with some demographic, some demographic information, and then, you you know, it's more general town character, quality of life. And then it starts to narrow down into different areas, um, that the 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 plan, the presumably master plan will, um. Uh.
There.
Talk about.
Yeah. A lot of a bunch of things.
Sure.
Why do you want to do it?
I mean, we can, we can talk about it, yeah. I mean, I I think it'd be great for everybody to just make comments and we can talk about it. And then if you, if you want to get your comments into me, we can, I can incorporate all of those comments. The the idea is I'd incorporate all those comments into some kind of summary and send it to different people for review. So do you want us to send you the comments? Do you want us to talk a lot? What we should talk about here, I think, right? And then.
So, I think about it from the lens of sitting on the council, the the questions we get. So first, I would separate sidewalks from bikes. Those are two separate things, and we deal with both of them individually.
So this separates sidewalks.
Yes, section three, bike paths, and I, instead of pedestrian, what ways, I would just say sidewalks.
Okay.
So, the punchline is, we, we have been told that the survey said the town wants sidewalks, very popular. And then when we want to put a sidewalk in, that neighbor shows up and says, we do want a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then we say, well, the survey said, so I want to, I want to make it very clear that the survey is just sidewalks.
Got you.
People, so that's.
No, no, that's fair, that's, that's.
Uh, affordability. And that's a euphemism for taxes. I don't know how, and what's driving that is, this is a list of all the things you want, yeah, 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 but want to balance it, right? Some of this stuff has costs.
Um, well, actually, on that, if there was ever reopening of fair share, when the next opening of fair share discussion happens, could some of, like, the evidentiary results of the survey being held against us in that fair share discussion, if like the the town, if there was ninety-five percent of the town said affordable housing is a problem, if somebody was going to have to build those remedy, could they go back to the survey and say, hey, by the way, your town?
Presuming?
Yeah.
Right. That's great. I don't know, that's a, that's a.
I, I, I.
Top leader or, or don't.
Uh, you can always make an argument. I don't know that that has much weight with the court, you know, in terms of, in terms of a survey, because at at the end of the day, you're a representative government. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm all, I'm only asking the question because we know the housing is unaffordable and that, you know, I don't, I mean, it's.
Well, sorry, what, you know what, when I said, when I said affordability, I didn't mean affordable housing. I meant, I meant.
Yeah, I'm just.
Taxes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking, but, sorry, I'm jumping track, I just.
So should we change that to taxes then? Or tax, tax space or tax? Or ta- tax space or tax structure?
I don't love that taxes, but affordability, I hear that a lot. I do hear, I can't afford to live here anymore, and when we're gonna put a fee in. Or we're talking about budget, a lot of people say, you know, this town, I grew up here, raised, you know, all that stuff. And I can no longer afford to live here.
I think people wanna, people who work in town or live in town, they work in it, they can't.
And that's workforce housing.
Farming. Can't afford here, there's also can't afford to live here.
So something that captures that concept, I don't care what we call it, taxes don't. Everyone's gonna say no on taxes, but.
Right.
Just instinctively, so something to sort of balance the, you know, there's benefits and burdens here and. Um, and then, uh, what is your preferred method of communication? So I hear that a lot, some people like to burrow buzz, some people be ready to sign out front, emails, texts. So I wouldn't mind capturing from people. How do you want us to communicate with you? And then, um. Two other things that we hear a lot about, well, some of it sort of died down is noise. So is it? Is there a problem with noise or not?
And like, like addressing the newest current noise orders.
Yeah, well, it's in the context of leaf flowers, um, but I don't wanna.
You want, you wanna.
Yeah, right, right, is there, do we have a problem with noise?
Okay.
Um, and then, um. There's a lot about speed limits. Uh, stop signs. You know, traffic flow, a lot of, we want speed bumps, we want uh, rumble strips, we want stuff, uh, stop sign, we want stop lights. Um, generally, they're characterized as traffic calming.
That's for the safety in traffic.
Yeah, something that gets at that.
Well, so you know, are you in favor of greater traffic calming?
Slower, slower traffic but calming, so, cause then some people complain that the speed limits too long.
Well, yeah, but there there are things that you can do, you can collar down the intersection by just different colorization.
Yes.
And there are, there are things we can do through research and we get to the committee level. If people do want traffic calming things, you know, something just as simply as highlighting, you know, that that intersection that's highly traveled. You know, doing, doing a, you know, instead of just your regular crosswalk, where you where the school is, you know, you really make that crosswalk prominent. You know.
And you change it to breakers.
Yeah.
Put the lights on it, but you know. That red back has by the hospital, we've talked about that idea.
You don't have the issue here, but you know, there are other municipalities where they have like from the town to the beach and it's an eight block. Midway through, they just had like a little traffic. You know, traffic bumps, I think there are some issues there regarding to D O T as to whether. On our own, we could probably do as to whether or not it's a county. Have issues, but it's a good thing to have it.
Yeah, the other thing that we get, um. Because of the state budget rules, we were uh, stuck with choosing between. Paying back recycling and cutting back trash pickup. We ultimately decided to keep trash, same with that back and recycling, I wouldn't mind capturing. The town's feedback on that choice in a way that it doesn't blow up in my face.
In this trash and recycling pickup.
And this is the reason, because we did a short-term contract on purpose so that we could revisit. Right, as quickly as possible, and if we have room to restore or to flip. Right, if people want to trim back trash and bring recycling back. That'll be a chance to do it. Um. So it have to, they have to be asked in the way that captures their preference of the one of the two, one of the other.
I think you could say something like, given three pickups a week, would you prefer?
Yeah, yeah.
One trash or one recycling.
So some way to capture.
Without sacrificing a folder or brush. You know, cause I think I feel the same way, I I would much rather prefer more recycling that we produce so much recycling as opposed to. It's not close, and so I'm constantly like it. I although I I was thinking about this just yesterday as I was making my. Bi- bi-monthly visit to the 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 carbillon drop off. Um, I got used to it when we were temporarily living in Rumsen and they have the drop off center like we now have. Our drop off center now even includes electronics, it's like, it's like, it's really robust, like people just need to. Uh, you know, you you get used to, like, if the option was like a reduced cost. Portability, you know, leading toward affordability and more do-it-yourself type of bring it to the recycling center, like that includes. You know, you could segregate your cans in aluminum, uh, aluminum and glass, I think, go to go in the same bin, paper goes in the same, you know, same bin. Electronics now, cardboard separately, you know, so many other towns, like they don't have. Uh, a a robust pickup, they have a robust draw. And, you know.
And we did change bulk pickup too, thank you, um, reminded me of that, and we just did turn that up from twelve to ten, I think. But yeah, that's a robust drop off. You know, maybe people would prefer that.
You know, but I think they would, to your point about affordability, like, would. A more robust drop off. Be acceptable for, you know, if if we get a limit, if we can reduce, uh, you know, a basis point off your, you know, percentage.
Actually, and you walk about now to the D P W.
Yeah, it's 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 really great, brand new.
That will be, that will be a good, that's when you want to talk to the D P W, it's like if we had more, more, we were encouraging people to do more drop offs or. Or provide greater drop off. You know, what do you need to do there too, like a physical facility, even if it's just circulation.
Yeah, and that that actually would be a circulation issue, because right now you like. Pull three cars over there, like they they do carve out a little bit of pull over space, but like, it's not like.
It used to be, you could drop off every week, almost like.
There are many towns that don't have.
Drop off was when you drove it in your car.
Oh, yeah.
And dropped it off and there would be a line.
Oh, bulk bulk garbage. Yeah, I believe that, yeah.
So the reason, the question should be, why did it change to the curbside? Like, when and why?
It's a good idea.
What about the, what about the brush pickup?
I have that on the list, so it feels like toxic. Yeah, because.
I mean, we're looking for feedback that that's gonna help plan the future, I mean, that might be a good question.
I'm open to it, so I would, Drew gets huge kudos because he has, you know, he he championed it. And then we've taken feedback and keep amending it and keep refining it, um, so he's sort of doing that continuously. Um. We have, we could find a way to word it that. You know, I don't. I wanna know what people's preferences are, I don't wanna hear what they don't like. Is that that sense?
You're looking for solutions.
Yeah, so, so look, I could make our taxes go way down, but I'd have to get rid of half the cops. People don't want that, and neither do I, right, so it's the preference.
I I think you start the question with, how can we improve?
Yeah, so it's wording, how can you improve, you know, traffic, like, how can we improve recycling?
Is that a leash?
Yeah, yeah, something, something that helps.
But I think that, I think that draws out that rather than, I don't, I don't like the recycling, I don't like.
Yeah.
How can we improve?
Yeah, I can do more recycling, we can tax their involved, I could do, you know, and it's constantly this give and take. Oh, and where where's that preference then? That's, that's what I'm in search of, from something like this.
Is it impossible, I mean, maybe it's off off record from what we're talking about right now, is it possible to have all the pickups on the same day?
We have all the trash on one, it used to be twice, remember, part of the town.
Right, so the trash picker for the whole town, same day.
Same day.
Can you do recycling, pick up trash, pick up and brush can?
I don't, the brush can's a separate animal. Uh, cause that's our D P W, recycling is outsourced.
Right, and and garbage.
Garbage is outsourced and. I don't recall, I, I think if you did it all the same day, we'd go with the same truck.
So, I I'm a place in Florida, just as an example. And I got three cans, I got a cream can, a big gray can and a big blue can. You put all of them out on Wednesday. And three different garbage trucks come by, I I watch three, I watch a guy, I'm like, hey, I forgot to get my stuff, I'm like, oh, that was a recycle guy, here we came. And three guys come flying by, sip, 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 and I put away my three cans, that's it, all day, week, no other day, you don't forget what day it is, you know what day it is.
I know people, people, people do like that we have recycling on one day only, because you used to get confused, what zone am I and is it? And and all that.
The whole town.
The whole town.
Right.
This is Tuesday, it's Tuesday for everybody, it's easy to remember, I'm a big fan of easy to remember, great, we're all to this soon, we've got.
Some suggestions on how to. Yeah, so so what what other sections here?
That's all, I think this is very good, by the way, I didn't say that, I I think it's excellent.
It needs a lot of them, it's it's a, it's a framework.
I think it's great.
You can still steal some things from your last survey.
Yeah, I was like, Fred, this one has thirty seven questions, the last survey.
How many questions for I have there?
You have a chair of subsegments.
But I think a comparison of this survey versus. Right, this survey was prior to master plan, I just surveyed into what the master plan was, that what we've solved since then. You might be, there might be questions in there that you don't eat, like I'm looking at questions for kahas, right? It was asked about if people are in favor of lighting the the recreation fields. And it was like sixty-seven percent of the people in the town said, yeah, light the recreation fields, yeah, I'm pretty sure we didn't light the recreation fields, right? So I don't know if that remained through the master plan, I don't know if that's something in our master plan of, what if we want to do, that's one of the things we never got checked off or not, you know? But it seems like town lost though.
Yeah, the survey does should govern what the board does.
Right, a hundred percent.
I spoke to one person that lived right next to one of those fields, they were like, we do not.
I guess they fall this twenty-three percent.
Without me, jumping in a couple ideas, I thought for the survey, and I I do like the idea of like, uh. Should zoning consider uh, an an additional kind of waterfront zone or something like that, I don't know, maybe. Front yard, backyard, kinda can be fungible or something like that, different, different ideas come out of that.
It it doesn't necessarily, but I mean, the thing that struck me about the application, I mean, we were talking about a three. Three acre cars. Single, single one.
And and they're having trouble fitting it on the property because of their old.
Well, one acre is under what? But I'm saying, but that could, you know, that one size fits all, may maybe, I I think at the end of the day. When that property is fully constructed. You're not going to necessarily look at it and go, oh my god, what what was the board thinking? I don't think you're gonna have that. But it went through a number of permutations to bring it down. So I'm saying, you know, but 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 there was, there were considerations from how you look for your water that you don't usually have.
Yeah, so it doesn't fit easily.
But that that would be not a perfect question to, oh, I wouldn't think that'd be more of a. Us reviewing zoning, best comparisons and approvals, the side.
Is there enough, is there enough?
It's like, if if every time somebody puts on a new porch. You're you're giving them one foot bearings for their front yard setback, so that fits, you know, the the view of everybody on the same street. Well, why don't we just change the order so they don't have to come in front of us?
As as long as, as long as, as long as your coverage is, you know, if you're otherwise informing and it doesn't.
Right.
We don't need to come before the board.
Yes.
That was kind of, if you find that you routinely grant and that's something like that. That was my point, that isn't, that doesn't lend itself to a survey. Yeah, that's researching.
I think Fred's survey has a lot about the business district, um, I do think.
Was a lot.
Yeah, business district, district goals should be kind of identified, um, and maybe if there's. An an opportunity to write in, I know it does look like there's other here, so. Um, proven to like to see more repair, I think what people are gonna put in is is, uh, and I hear this. Enough is like restaurants and liquor license. And like, I I do think that the, I know that the the state, the state mandates that all of the liquor license thing, but I know that there was as of last year, some. Discussion of changing the rules, but I don't think that ever got passed, so I think it just should be something that I think that the the residents have. You know, expressed interest in fine dining, and if that has to, you know, if that comes from. You know, at the addition of liquor licenses, I think that'd be something that this town would support, um. I don't know if that's even feasible, but maybe part of the discussion in in uh, in the master plan.
Depending on the nature of the license, some of it's census driven. You know, depending on your population as to how many licenses you're trying to have. But but then there are different types of license which still may satisfy. You know, maybe not a hard, maybe not a full suit, but 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 a wine or.
Jersey wines, I guess, there's some license for yourself, Jersey wines.
Um, I heard the the global licenses that two exist in town, right, that's the.
I hear more and more people, and again, this is just. Not necessarily in this community, but in my community, they like to bring your own. Because they're not, you know, nine times out of ten, they're getting, they're getting a nicer wine. At a, at a more reasonable price, and even though the the bump up may be in a dining. It's not going all to pull it's liquor. You know what I'm saying, so just have those, make, if those rules apply, that may be a good halfway.
Unfortunately, we saw a, I I thought a very. Good restaurant, casual restaurant, that didn't have the liquor license come and go.
That that was, that would survive.
I agree. Um, I think we should have some environmental goals, uh, somebody suggested that we could. Measure both tree canopy percentage and air quality data. Um, now that is coming from friends on the shade tree commission, so.
Wait, what's they want?
Well, you can, you can.
What we wanna ask him?
Well, you know, do do, I guess, yeah, how do you frame, how do you frame a question like, um.
But I I missed, I missed, I I didn't hear the whole thing.
So some environmental goals that we could ask questions about. I I might suggest that the percentage of tree canopy versus open space or something like that, you can. You can get a measurement pretty easily, um, of the current tree canopy coverage.
And is there, the question is, do you feel significant, are tree canopy?
Should we be? Should we be investing more in shade trees in public spaces, should we be investing more into. Uh, providing shade trees to residents who who ask for it, I know we have a tree buying program now. Um, if there's some sort of subsidy that's coming from, um, some of the, you know, the. The 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 application revenue for, you know, to help people plant shade trees, I I know this has been talked about a few different ways of the. Small, the the subcommittees over the years, but. Um, seeing, and I I wasn't aware of this, but apparently there's an air quality issue around here too, I didn't know that, but, um. If, uh, apparently, yeah.
Who said that and, under what basis was that said?
Uh, it was, it was a a shade tree commission member discussing the a measurement of of air quality in Fairhaven. Compared to. Oh, I can't remember, so it it it's something to do, this is going back a few months, it's something to do with like. We get air coming down from. The city.
For falling air streams and stuff?
I guess, yeah.
How are they, but how how can they? Well, I'm genuinely interested in, i- is it just like, it's an anecdotal complaint or an ad, or do they?
Add data, like, I alone heard this from one person, but I just wanted to throw it out there, if there is. You know, we have, uh, uh, we have a strong interest in, you know, environmental, um. Issues.
Whether child says right now are air quality in Fairhaven. But is that something we can even impact? I mean, how how that?
I don't know, I bet you if you had more trees, you have better air quality, but.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, just, just throw it out.
Yep.
Um.
Air bowl.
I don't know, I'm kinda hesitant on the last one.
So, oh, now you're bad, I gotta say.
Are people in town happy with public school performance here? I have met a lot of people, several sent their kids to private schools. And, um. What's that?
That's what I was thinking too, is I tend to agree with you, um, but that's not a, or a, what are the master plans, are they gonna change that?
Well, I I I only say. Boards of education. Run the school district and those types of things, they are separate corporate.
Yeah.
Political entity, I mean, you could certainly, if if you thought somehow it was tied into circulation because people couldn't get to the schools properly. But I think that would be a stretch, but in terms of. Quality of of education, or if you're not happy with test scores, with those types of things, which is. I I represent a lot of boards of education too. That's pretty much exclusively the failure of the board of education, your master plan really isn't. It's really not a. Unless it was air quality affecting kids. Unless unless it was perhaps that you needed to provide more space for schools.
Well, that's, that's where I.
That might be a different issue, but again, I would coordinate with the school district because. Again, this is tied into the state, if you're. If you're right now, don't have a overcrowded, that's. Problem, you're not gonna get on the list for funding.
But if we look ten years from now, right, which is what this is supposed to do, we've seen the growth of the amount of kids, young kids coming into this town over the past couple of years with. Younger folks, you know, younger couples. I do have concern about the amount of space that we have in our schools that have signals. I do have concern about the amount of space that we have in our schools, and I've seen this, but on addition, Noel did, is that in our. Is it in our purview to say, hey, the question here? For classroom sizes and everything else.
I think, I would think that the politically correct, not classic term, but politically correct, small P, small C. Would be touch base to the school, how's your classrooms? How do you think, do you, do you think you need more, more or greater facilities? I, I would think, I would think it probably would, but I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be ahead of the board of education and or its administrative team on that. Without a decent soul.
Cause, cause I agree, like, right, like on my, on my street, you know, there's, I'm like the whole back of my street now, you know what I mean, there's. You know, I go to like the fair and die, I don't know. But at the same time, you know, this young family just got three kids, lives across the street from me now. My three, my three kids are going to college in two years, so I'll all three of them out, you know, so it's. Right, so, so there'll be spaces open to the school, as these guys age up. The people who are currently in school are aging out, so I wonder census data wise.
And, and the board that changes. Yeah, a floor of education will have that number, we've graduated how many, what's our kindergarten classes here? You're go, you're going to, they're going to have that stuff at their fingertips, and that may drive or inform your determination as to whether or not. The town needs to start looking towards space for something like that.
And it's my question though, should that be something that we add, even add as a question, is that, is that our? We can start to think about it as a.
My recommendation with, no, not without talk to the school. Because they do this kind of stuff too, only they, only it's called a PTA or a BTO.
Sort of relating to this, another area of preference that I would love to distill over the town is. There's a dynamic between people with kids that use the rec fields, right? And then there's empty nesters that use the natural area. And there's a perception that it's off balance, that, that sort of, in this particular case, the natural area gets kind of second fiddle to. Sports fields, and is that balance right, so should we, we tilt it?
Probably, probably true.
And, and yeah.
I bet you there's five thousand people using sports field on the weekend, and there's two hundred people on the natural area.
And then having the survey reflect that five thousand saves. Rec fields and two hundred. Then I understand where the, the, you know, you don't wanna ignore any group, but preference would lean towards sports. But if the surveys come more fifty fifty, then we might need to tweak, again, preferences and where resources.
One of the questions I asked, I had, it was around, related to the schools and kids and couples coming in, infrastructure. Do we have, I've actually heard, these more houses are going up, water pressure's going down, we don't have the infrastructure to support this. You know, obviously, that's part of the flood tables as well, do we have any purview around that, or is that something we can? With respect to like, working with Rich and team, DPW.
I, I, I certainly think in the way I've seen it approached in the past, is you touch base with Rich, you touch base with DPW. What, what are we obliged to do by the state department, it's probably covering those right now. Are we going to have to start planning for home stations every Monday, I have to start planning for different water quality issues. Some time ago, it was issues to make sure that you had. Sufficient, you know, that, that you did have sufficient water pressure, that's certainly something by way of infrastructure that you do. And if you can identify that. Again, we're even gonna do that, I, I'm thinking of what we did with the DPW facility, we recognized that we needed to make some changes in that. And identifying the issue, if that's an identifiable issue from your DPW and, and Rich. It'd certainly be, it'd certainly be something that's put into the master.
What was the concern, what, what was the, the, what was the issue? Some of the folks I've talked to said that all these new houses are going up. But the, the number of lots is fixed. Right, but you have bigger houses going up, or, or smaller houses were going, so if you think about, you know, a two bathroom or three bathroom house. Now you're going to a six bathroom house, or a five bathroom house, depending on how you're looking at it, just using waters example, and do we have the infrastructure? To support all of these new water sprinkler systems going in where there wasn't sprinkler systems in the past. Like, how do we?
Survey question, but it might be something you do internally for reason.
Right, to, to address or not address.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask your family, do you think you have enough water? That's a survey question.
Do you control this flush fast enough?
Yeah.
Our teen boys, every shower's forty minutes.
I think the sprinkler system's.
I, I, I think it's actually a good question, I mean, I agree with Fred, like, it's not like, hey, we're putting a track housing where we didn't have it, it's not having a bunch of people on his houses. But you are having houses that had those sprinklers or no pool and those sprinklers, and we're, you know, a, a bath and a half that are now. Four bathrooms or three bathrooms with sprinklers in the yard again, makes sense.
Yeah, to find out what that impact.
Yeah.
What that impact is, and I think that's a.
Some utilities guy, uh, all.
I think you probably have a whole session for what, you know, they think you need, and, but again, if you're talking about limited resources. And you're talking about. You know, again, this is the, this is the ten year view. Now. Is it something now, is it something mid, is it something at the end of the ten years? You know, and if it's, if it is something costly. Okay, you want more time to plan, it's not gonna be done in the first year, it's not gonna be done this second. Slowly hopefully set aside and maybe find grant money if it's something like that. So then you can have a resource, not in the first, second, third, or fifth, but maybe the sixth or seventh, we're definitely gonna have to address it by that.
Speaking of ten year views, you know, I'm not a, it's not for me, I'm not a fan of it, but, um, do you ask a survey question about electric charging stations?
We're supposed to address.
Wasn't set yet.
Well, you, you want to.
It's supposed to be in the plan this year, isn't it?
I say supposed to be, cause that's how we did the.
Well, there are, there are several, there are building facilities that are quote unquote charged ready. You know, making the allocation as opposed to having any station. If you're, if you're going to be doing something, and it's, there are a variety of ways to attach it, if you're going to be doing. You know, your mixed use affordable housing, you're going to find that developers are going to want to take advantage of that. Because to the extent that they have a charging facility in there, and they're obliged to have their parking on site. They get a bonus. Discount if they have the charging stations there, or if they haven't charged ready, so there, there are some nuances, but you at least need to address. That's something that should.
I'm saying just the town on it, you know, in the survey, we're basically asking, what do the residents want or think?
Yeah, do, do you feel that there are sufficient charging stations, something?
Um, I wouldn't mind asking, do people feel safe? You know, just sort of confirming that. And that gets to, you know, do we have enough place presence, presence, there's a lot of. The stolen cars, and, um, you know, sort of, serialing in that in some fashion.
Which knock on wood, that's. Very quiet.
Yes, yeah.
Since, since they're so.
Sometimes I hear that we need another cop versus the towns like us around, and then other people say no. So I wouldn't mind flushing out all the town things.
But you and I have a private conversation about how, how, what we made it.
Okay. I want it worded in a way that doesn't lead to it.
Right, it may not be something you're planning. This is the one board of education cap.
What incident?
When they had the. No, no, the, uh, the shooting, the cop. I'm just saying.
I thought there was something missing.
Kind of stopped the problem.
The bikes, the, uh.
E-bikes?
No, no, the, there was a. I heard that there was a big recovery of stolen bikes, and so. What, just in town? Yeah, it was a recovery, yeah. Oh, the bikes are getting stolen out of nowhere, like. Weren't they getting stolen out of nowhere at the end of last year, like, everybody was reporting that their bike was getting.
I heard it was a prank, like some kid was moving other kids' bikes, and. So I don't know whether that's true or not.
Yeah, and that, that's why I was like, you said an incident, I was like, what incident, and then, then I did see something posted where. I don't know if it was Red Bank or it was, it wasn't Fairhaven, but it was announced. But we've recovered, you, you know, a, a lot of stolen bikes, if you have, if you're in Red Bank, Fairhaven, Little Silver. And you have a bike that was stolen, we may, yeah, so. Exactly what the bike thief would say.
Yeah, they're all over.
You get, when, when, when my, my children were younger. I had three, but there was seven bikes. They were, somebody, somebody began to borrow one to come home that night, you know.
Yep.
Uh, that's.
Yeah, we had like five bikes and I got two in my garage, I don't know where.
You, you mentioned small businesses, is there, is there something here around, or do we get, do we have purviews that are going through this? Of making it easier for small businesses to come into Fairhaven, like, I think back to the Hoboken days, when I lived there for eighteen years, it was.
There's a, there's another committee forum to talk about that, it's gonna work with the. Um, with the, um, business association as well to incorporate, you know, thoughts, and that committee will then. Interface with us.
Great. I, I agree, I, I agree, the, the, my experience, I think, over the last several years has been that. There. Where people have been getting hung up, it, it's not a Fairhaven thing where people are getting hung up, it's like either the parking. Or, y- y- you know, other issues that are. Part of the MLUL, they're not ordinance driven, they're not Fairhaven ordinance driven, like, Fairhaven's a pain in the ass. Because their ordinances suck, or what I excuse my language, but, but it's like the, the Don and Donut thing, the, the thing with the. Seafood, the seafood thing, like, that was, that was purely. The, the, the formula of how the escrow is calculated, which is a, a law, like, it's a state law. That prescribes how that is calculated, it's not a Fairhaven, like, Fairhaven's being a pain in the ass, and, and, you, you know. So like, I, I just, I wonder what, like, what can make it easier, right, like, it doesn't seem like we're doing anything to make it difficult.
So there, there is a combination of NLUL, it's, you know, it's zoning, and it's, you know, parking and circulation, and that's. This group is getting together to both talk about the, you know, sort of what the, the, the map, the, the business district looks like. And what, you know, sort of think about from one end, what's going to come up, what property is gonna turn over, where is that need gonna be, and then looking at it from. You know, the, the baseline of what, you know, rules, regulations, laws are in place now that can either be, you know. Supported in interpretation or addressed in terms of, you know, is there other changes necessary, and what all the courage and drews on this as well would be. Um, to, um, you know, if they have questions that, I'll, I'll put in front of this group, like, whether or not they wanna incorporate some specific questions. Um, Carolyn Ferguson was, there was one meeting, um, Chris York led it, Carolyn was not there. So there's nobody from the, uh, business association there, um, and once we get that group together, I'll, I'll bring this up. There, there are things you can do if it's planning issue, not so much if it's a zoning issue, but I, by way of example, in another community that I represent. The proprietor just wanted to, you know, it was originally just a, a clothing boutique, and, and a knick knack. For your house, so, you know, it's some clothing, and then things to decorate your house, and, and what she wanted to do. Was serve coffee. Not necessarily as the, as the driving force, but. To allow patrons to do that, and when she was told, you have to do a full site plan. Well, there has been increased use, I think, by, you know, this Beth and I would, exempt redevelopment. Um, where if the, I mean, I guess there'd be an argument about some change in use in terms of. You can put in language that if it's to minimus, that you can send it to the site plan committee for review.
You can do that now.
And, and I'm just saying, maybe you highlight that for, or make that clear, that that's usually something that's business friendly. That if they know that, I'm just gonna modify the sign, and I don't wanna have to do, you know, can I get this done? At least let people know that that's out there, if you've already got that, then. One, one of the moves is to communicate, um, both the, uh, principles around exempt redevelopment as well as. You know, sort of a, um, a committee level review, or, you know, an early read with Rich to see if things can be. You know, if there's anything that's sort of inside or near the borders, so that some, you know, things that can be. You know, worked around, having a go to, um, you know, zoning or planning can be, you know, worked around, interpreted without professional.
I mean, we waived, you, you know, just the last application last month, we waived, I don't know, four or five different things off the. Off the application straight away before they even. I'm not suggesting it's equal, I'm not trying to suggest that business, that there's, there's not a point. Right, I'm not suggesting that at all, but I, I just said, it's like, I'm like, well, what? Well, like, why do people think we're so hard to work with?
It's cause that initial communication, so, um, Andrew pointed out that he didn't realize that there was this. Initial conversation to be had around, you know, potentially exempt, um, exempt applications or, you know, redevelopment. And I think that one of the things that we're gonna suggest is to create a liaison, a liaison between. The business community, the, you know, someone, somebody that sits in the middle that can be talked to about, you know, that's outside the committees. It can be talked to about what necessarily needs to happen, so that there's a shorter path between the two points, they can be guided down that path to the right people. That can help them versus going through the same chain every single time, which is the problem right now, you walk in, the first thing after you do is write a check. For the, uh, for the deposit. But it is, it, this is in process, and, uh, you know, we'll, uh, we'll be, you know, communicating that, I assume that we'll work out cross communication on.
If you have enough, you want us to send, yeah, so, so ideally, you, you know, by some, you know, early next week, if, if people can send comments. Or other, uh, other things, you, you know, rewrite anything here, I guess email, I will, I would put something together. Uh, and, and, you know, solicit comment from the, 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 the seventy comment from. And hopefully have that comment back by the next, next meeting, or do we have to send a word document now? Yeah. You want, I'll, I'll distribute it to everybody.
And you looking for Fred, both, um, survey questions that we've got to the public, as well as stuff that we individually think we should research. When they think maybe ourself.
Exactly, yes. Additional survey questions and some of the ideas, I'll, I'll say, here's a skeleton survey that we, that, that. You, you know, we put together, we discussed at the meeting, and then here's all the comments that now please add your comments. So that's Chris York, mayor, council, zoning, whoever else wants to comment on the survey. And then, once we get all that comment, I'll flip it back to Sullivan, and then they can. Yeah, I mean, he did say that he would review the survey, but the survey was more or less our responsibility, so. Um, I guess when Chris can go shoot the, the feed, Chris did say that he's like, look, we can run the survey, so. I mean, that was news to me, cause I, I was thinking that was something you need the planners for, but.
I think we did a survey, monkey or something.
Yeah, the restaurant survey was pretty efficient.
The restaurant survey was.
Okay, so Chris, I, I, I.
We posted on the website, we put a sign, we put it up on the board in town.
There's Chris Bell.
Yeah.
Yeah, that it was, look, Fred, or, you know, look, we can do this, I, we're not paying you thirty grand to do survey, we can do it ourselves. I, I agree with, but we need to get something, you know, Mike Sullivan's pre admit that we, we do this, you know, certainly. At least have something and find draft form in the next, you know, sixty to seventy five weeks.
So you're gonna, you're gonna edit these comments and send them out?
So everybody send me something by early next week, then I will still everything back into. I, I'll send you this, so that you can maybe change this to it that, that we want, uh.
I'm gonna be focused on e-bike charging stations.
Okay. So comments, so I'm gonna send this out, so everybody has to, uh, e-copy of it, right, by early next week, everybody sends me back their comments. And then I'm going to distill all of that into sort of, uh, a memo form or something to send to. Chris and, 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 yeah.
I, either I can do this, or you can do this, but I'd actually suggest, um, maybe sending this from this committee to Todd. Or Chris.
Yeah.
A formal communication between the two committees. Um, you know, I'm glad to do it, you can, you know, tell me what's better.
Well, I, I thought we should get all of our stuff, once we've got it all. As, as sort of, here's our, you know, survey, and we've, we've gotten comments, and I distill those comments together. I then, as a formal, here's where we're at, can you all please make a formal?
Have your recommendation comments or?
Public comment? Anyone online? Need to say anything? Anna?
Hi, sorry. Um, can you guys hear me? Uh, no, I had raised my hand a few times just about some of the small business stuff that was discussed. Um. Mike, I'd love to work with you on any of that. Uh, I kind of just went through it with a business in town and there is quite a massive barrier of entry. To get in here, which I think overall deters small businesses. There's a reputation that the town has. Of not being um, accommodating to getting. Businesses in, whether that's. You know, from a legislative standpoint or from a zoning board standpoint, I just think um, there have been some experiences that we could pull from. Um, and Carolyn would be a really good person to talk to about that, so. Um, that was one thing. And then Dave, I just sent you back. I know we wanted to brand this a little bit, so. Um, the logo changes, um. I thought that was great and I just moved the star up a little bit. Oh, no, that one you can forget about, but the. Yeah, the wheel, the Albertino wheel, we had worked on um, so that we can get some, some of that printed and um, you could take a look.
Anything else?
No, I'll go.
Anybody else on? Is there, I can't even see this. Does it run? All right, I'll move to. Paul. Say. I stood up a great joke with air.